Hey, welcome to the Town Hall, the Board of Selectmen's Room, also a meeting room for general use here at our Town Hall. And it's our second annual roundtable Board of Selectmen's Discussion. We're going to be followed right after this by the Budget Committee candidates are going to be doing a roundtable with me, and that's a first. I haven't done preliminary interviews, so that should be very interesting. I kind of know everybody that's sitting here with us pretty well, except for Kim, Kim Queenen. I haven't met her before, but I'm going to kind of go through and introduce you. To my left is Kurt Schaefer, John Brunel, Kim Queenen, Jack Pinciero, and Rich LaSalleis, all running for selectmen. And I'd like to start off by asking you people about how long you've been in town?
Well, I've been in town since 2005. It'll be fifteen years this May, or eh, March.
And John?
Since nineteen ninety-eight, so twenty-two years.
Wow, okay, Kim?
Since two thousand, twenty years.
Thirty years.
How many years, Jack?
Thirty.
Thirty.
This is me when I moved to town. Nineteen seventy-nine, I was thirty years old. I'm the guy with the beard, straight out of the submarine service.
How many more pictures you got, Rich?
I've got, I've got pictures.
We weren't until we could be props.
Oh, come on, this is WhatsApp? We are all about props. There are props all over this place. You never know what could happen.
You know, Diane, could I make a suggestion?
Why, yes, Rich.
I think if we're going to be in a formal setting like this with a, with a studio audience and, you know, it's out over the internet and everything, I think Pizza Lita should wear a toupee.
Is it shining off the lights?
The glare from the lights or kind of...
I'm sorry, do you feel safe in the selectmen's room?
I feel very safe.
Okay, just check it, just check it. So I also want to ask, what other boards that you've served on in town? What about you, Kirk?
Um, Kirk.
Kurt, sorry.
That's all right.
Sorry.
I was the president of Litchfield Baseball for a few years, and I was on the Recreation Committee before I became a selectman.
Okay, in one term as a selectman, this will be your second if you're elected?
Yes, up for reelection.
And John?
So zoning board initially, then the nine years on the Board of Selectmen, and through the Board of Selectmen, I served as a liaison to the Budget Committee, Conservation, Rec. And I don't think I ever did planning, so, for nine years.
Okay, and Kim?
I'm going to go in the order I joined them. Litchfield Historical Society for four years, the Litchfield Planning Board for four years. I'm in my second term, I'm currently vice chairman. Let's see, through that, being on the Planning Board, NRPC, the Nashville Regional Planning Commission, I'm a commissioner for the town of Litchfield for four years, and then the Heritage Commission, which voters approved in two thousand and eighteen. I'm currently on that for, since its inception, two thousand and eighteen.
And the Planning Board, did you already say that? And then the Heritage?
Yeah.
Okay, and Jack?
I was on the Litchfield Fire Volunteer for three, four years, on the Budget Committee for a couple of years, four years, four terms, three-year terms for Board of Selectmen, and I was your road agent for ten years.
Okay, Rich?
I was on the Rec Committee initially, then on the Budget Committee for a couple of terms, and then I was on the School Board for three terms, and I'm in my second term as representing Litchfield in the State House of Representatives.
So, we couldn't have too much more qualified candidates to come in on our selectmen. We need two, two people. So we need to figure out, you need to figure out as a voter, which of these people represents your needs and wants to the most of their ability. And there's some questions about what's going on in town. I know that there's some questions about taxes and other things going on in town, and one of them that was a really good question is what are some of the things that you see that need attention around town, and what are your plans to take care of them? Try to narrow it down to one each. Kurt?
Our biggest enemy right now is Saint Obane. We have, we have, and Saint Obane has put us in a position where a lot of our residents are very upset, not only because of them, but because of the quality of the water that Penetra is delivering. And everybody seemingly has brown water lately, and I think that we really, really need to look into this and get Penetra in here, have a discussion with them, find out why we got, why Penetra East is delivering dirty water to our residents.
Yeah, I heard a lot about, I mean, I thought that, I know that the water that everybody's getting from Penetra is our water, and
It isn't.
I heard it's not our water anymore, that we're getting from Penetra.
Yep.
I don't know when that changed and how it changed, but that's interesting.
Yeah.
So that would be your first, and what would you do?
Well, I mean, we got to
You'd have Penetra in?
Yeah, we need to get Penetra in here, whether it be Larry Goodhue, the president, and, and, and it might not be him, but we need, we've already negotiated with Penetra in certain aspects of the town, and we need to take it a step further and get Saint Obane to help us figure out how they can either fund water for, you know, the five hydrants for the town, and to get Penetra in here to change the quality of the water, and whether it be providing filtration or better quality water, I don't know. I mean, I'm not an expert at water, but I want them to figure out the problem. I mean, we need to present that problem to them and say, we're not going to take this anymore, and let them figure out what a good solution is.
I don't think a week goes by on the WhatsApp page that we don't see somebody's tub that they're trying to wash their child in, filled with brown water. So I like that question, and I like that approach. John, what do you see going on?
So I think Kurt raised a real good, quite, a good point or a good issue, but I think additionally, it's also, it's the assets and our employees in town. So when I talk about assets, it's all the things that we already own today, we need to be able to maintain them. We've not been doing, we've been doing a good job over the last many years, but we still have a lot more to do. So we need to keep that focus, we need to keep on repairing our roads and making sure they're, 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 they're good. We've got to make sure that our equipment's ready, ready for that challenge, and we have to make sure all of our people are prepared to do it, right? So we got to
So how do you think that we should do that?
I think we got, I think we have to prioritize, right? So we have to take a look at those assets again and reevaluate where they sit in our, in our plan, and focus
So you want to look at them?
We have to look at them, we have to, we have to take action though, too, right?
Yeah, right.
We've had road programs in place when our previous road agent was in there, we still have them today, but we've, we've, we need to continue that effort, right? So we spent extra dollars every year to make sure those roads are repaired, we need to continue that process. Our buildings need to be maintained, we have, we have concerns around space and need, space needs, and we've got to focus on that, right? We've addressed one, we have others that we have to deal with, so.
That's true. Kim, what about you?
My, I, what I see and talk to a lot of people are, everything is about cost of just living in general. I know there's a role of, of, of the Board of Selectmen, but what I would like to see if we could have a high-level exploration between, if we were allowed to, because I know the Board has a charter, and the school district has its own charter, but maybe we can start having a communication or exploring. I can see on the, on the Board side, you're starting to look at maybe merging some departments or, you know, using people that can do multiple jobs. I've seen on our, on the municipal side, we're working with Hudson or other towns, maybe, you know, for example, ambulance service, you know, to try to work from town to town, municipal to municipal. I would hope that we could look at exploring if we could work with the school district, maybe there's some overlap that can happen there, snow plowing, you know, mowing the grass, things like that, I think you were already exploring. I would also see if the school could work with other towns also, if there's overlap that multiple towns together could work at. So I'm just saying, an exploratory committee to just look at the costs on, on the, on the Board of Selectmen's budget, on the school budget, and just see if, maybe it's been done, but maybe revisit it again, and, and just look for some cost savings that way.
Okay. Jack?
I'm wondering about the MRI reports that have been put out there, there, there's one for, pretty much for every department, fire department, police department, highway department, town incinerator, recycling. There's been recommendations that have come in, some have been taken care of, some have moved forward, but where are we with the rest? These reports are some, somewhere in the vicinity of eighty to a hundred pages, there's got to be a lot of
How much did it cost for us to get that MRI report done?
In some cases, ten thousand dollars.
In some cases, in some cases, more than that.
In some cases, more than that. But we need to look at those, get an opportunity to read
Say what the MRI department, MRI reports are for somebody who might not know they are.
Oh, MRI, they come in and do a study on the departments, they find out how many people are employed, is it enough to, you know, to do the job? They look at the equipment, they look at the buildings, the whole, whole thing, and then they'll come back with a recommendation.
So you're kind of focusing on one part of that, and you, Jack, see other parts that haven't been focused upon yet?
Yeah, and if I can add to that, so, to Jack's point, there was an MRI study done in the police department, most of the police department MRI has been executed, and I think the only real standing issue still is sort of the assessment of property.
Which ones do you feel like haven't been
DPW would be the only one, I think, that was the last one that was done, Jack?
Well, highway, highway and the incinerator were both, or land, were the two that were done last.
And, and out of that report, and I think Kurt can speak with to it, is, there was a lot of steps to get there, a lot of it was investments. So there was a, the concept of merging our highway, recycling to formerly a DPW, a relayer of structure of people, but more, more importantly, they focused on a lot of areas that we were short, like missing equipment, not having the right amount of people. I think in this year's budget or this year's request, there's a hiring of another, another, another highway employee to start meeting those assessments and needs. And that's what goes back to what I said earlier, there's
Okay, Jack, so, so you're kind of looking at those kind of things, and because your, your specialty is the highway department, are you specifically thinking about looking at the MRI for the highway department if you were elected?
I think overall, you know, they're saying that the police department has fulfilled most of the obligation of that MRI report. Okay, fine, let's take a look, maybe there's more that can be done. All the departments need to be looked at. I'm not saying singular, singling out the
Even ones that they think in the past have been done?
Right.
Okay.
Things change as years go on.
That's true. When were the MRI reports created?
All different times. I mean, as, as, as we needed to evaluate, like the MRI report for the police department was done in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-eight, so.
Which, Jack, you were probably around then?
Yeah.
But the highway was just done like three or four years ago, two or three, two or three years ago.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, whenever we feel like there's a need to evaluate something, we typically ask them to come in and take a look at
So what company does it?
It's Municipal Resources Incorporated.
Okay.
And they, they, they come in and they, they evaluate everybody around the state. I mean, they're busy working for different towns, municipalities, and helping them get better at what they do.
Okay.
And that's how they, that's what their experience is.
The fellow that came in to do the highway department was a, an engineer from Dover.
Uh-huh.
And he was, he was
He was good.
Very, very good.
Yeah.
I mean, he, he really spent a lot of time here, and came back time and time again because he had more questions, and that kind of impressed me.
That's great.
The
How often do they come back, do you know?
He came back to me, I think, three or four times.
Yeah, so, but when was that report created? I mean, is it time?
It was created about three years ago.
Two thousand, two thousand and eighteen.
So they do get reevaluated?
Yeah, computers.
Okay.
How often do you do it? That's the, that's the question, I mean.
I think the interesting thing is, is, so, police report was done in two thousand and eight, that's when it was published, and there was a lot of findings that came out of that, that the department had to work towards, right, to build out. The department, the Public Works Feasibility Study, which was completed in two thousand and eighteen, was done, and just to figure out, are we the right structure, do we have the right structure? And, and to Jack's point, they did an extensive study, right? They came back many times, interviewed lots of people, they looked at the different operations, how they, how they executed on their plans, and they came back with a bunch of recommendations. And again, the current Board, I believe, is trying to map to that plan, right? The other study that was done, and we've only had, this will be the third and only other study we've done, was in two thousand and eighteen, which is around our inspection services. So going back to building, fire inspections, how we merge those services together, and how we better get the bigger, the biggest bang for the buck, basically.
Yeah, good.
And that's a plan that's been worked on, too. So those are the three, those are the three, three and only studies that I believe that were done, and they are available on the website, the town website, to review if anyone's interested in what they say.
All right, John, thank you. Rich?
Yes, could you repeat the question?
Do you want me to repeat the question?
I'll just jabba-jabba it down there.
What are some, what are some things that you see in town that need attention?
Okay, I got it.
And how would you approach them?
I think everybody moved to Litchfield for a, for a particular reason, I think, by and large, everybody that lives in Litchfield loves Litchfield. When they get their tax bill, when they open the tax bill, they see the, the taxes that they pay, and, you know, they say, well, the kids are doing good in school, got a lot to do, it's, it's a, it's a wonderful town to live in, they go ahead and pay their taxes. Taxes keep going up. I think people need to have confidence that everything that happens in this Town Hall is done on the up and up. And I've been very concerned about conflicts of interest and some of the things in the past with respect to what the selectmen are doing. So that's, that's one of the reasons that I'm moving to Litchfield. If you think about the tax burden that people have to government, you pay federal taxes, you pay state taxes, and you pay town taxes. A lot of people like me, the biggest tax bite is town taxes. Most people that are young, it's federal taxes. Most people, thank goodness, don't pay a lot to the state. But they need to understand and have confidence, when they open that tax bill, that we're going to make the most efficient use of that, of those taxes that they possibly can. And I'm not sure that everybody right now has that confidence.
Thank you, Rich. So given some of the things that you've seen in town and some of the things that your interests are, what is the biggest reason you wanted to run, Kurt?
Well, I think we're in a good position right now in the town, we've instilled some really great department heads at this point, and I think our next step is to challenge them, and as I said earlier, when we interviewed, to bring them down to a zero budget so that we can start to figure out how they can operate most efficiently to save money for taxes. I'm a taxpayer, too, I don't, I don't like opening the tax bill and seeing it grow, but the last few years, we've had to make some hard decisions and, and, and unfortunately create some, some bills that we don't necessarily, some, you know, expenses that we've needed to grow with, and, and now it's a chance to, to lower those taxes.
John, what about being a selectman appeals to you?
I've said it before, I like being the, the voice of the community and be part of the community, so ultimately, I'm doing it because I want to volunteer my time and, and give back as much as I can. I've seen, in the nine years I was on, and even now, I've seen a lot of changes in how this, this previous Board or this Board act functions and how it was run prior. I think that we, the Board and myself, look at every request for any funding, and we look at whether it's a need or a want, and we try to determine whether it's right, this is the right direction to the community. I think one of the things the Board struggles with, though, is not hearing from the community, right?
How would you want to hear from the community? I mean, the WhatsApp page, you can't, you can't stumble two feet without hearing what the
That's true.
Community thinks.
That's true.
And, and what the community thinks about what the community thinks on the WhatsApp page.
And that's all
That is one place where people, we do try to keep it civil, but
Right, and, and I think that's been a good, good source of, at least a feeling of this community in general. I think people need to get more involved. You talk about the budget time, budget season, the budget season starts in August and runs all the way till the end of December, and all that
Or January or February.
Yeah, it depends on, and every budget, every, every department is looked at line by line by line, and we really would like people to come in and talk to us about why they don't think that's the right thing to do, or spend money some other different way.
Rather than see them at deliberative, we'd rather see them
Right, and even at deliberative, you
At the board meetings.
Even at deliberative, you see fifty people.
Right, it's true.
Same people every year, too.
And it's the same people, and I've said this before, I mean
Oh, is that coming, good?
And we talked about, I think it was Jack, earlier, and I, earlier, we're talking about volunteerism, we see the same, same people who volunteer, and the WhatsApp team is probably part of that same group. We need folks to get more involved, and when you don't agree with it, you need to come, come to the Board meetings and talk to the, your representatives.
We are a small town, and, and the only way, I did read a comment by someone else that was saying that we pay enough taxes, why are we constantly fundraising and volunteering? And it is because we're a small town.
It is a small town, and, and you have to balance the need and the want, right? And some of the fundraisings for the wants, the nice to haves versus the actual needs, there's, the town's budget is, is based on keeping the service levels we have today the way they are.
But being able to afford to live here.
It's always in, it's, it's a balance, right? And we always are trying to do that, and, and as Kurt said, I'm a taxpayer, too, and every decision I make is impacting my, my bottom line also, but I also will make decisions, even though it's going to impact me in a, in a bad way in some regards, because it's better for the community as a whole.
Kim, what about you? This is your first tally into the, into the selectman area, arena.
Right.
What made you do it? What, what appeals to you about being a select person?
I think John brought it up about giving back to your community. All the four Boards I'm on now are all volunteer, it's a lot of time, it has impacted my job, honestly, but I still do it because it's worth it, I've given up a lot of sleep.
It's got to be a little fun.
Right.
It's got to be some fun in it, right?
It is fun, because once you get involved in one group, all of a sudden, you see a need in that group, and it's that. As far as the, the Board, why I would like to do it, I think the Planning Board itself and working with the Nashville Regional Planning Commission, the thirteen surrounding towns around here with the, with their regional vision, I think that would be a very good asset to the Board of Selectmen, to just have a, a voice that way. Because we speak, when we're at the regional level, we go all the way up from the state reps, all the way back to the Boards in, in town, so I think that communication being open would, would be helpful.
Very nice, okay, thank you. Jack? Why do you want to do it again? Dude, how many times have you done it? You're back!
I, I enjoy it, it, it's an impact on everybody, that's, I think that's it, every time you, you make a decision, if you haven't been out in the community and talked to, talked to the people, and I've always kind of prided myself on that, that I've always spent that extra five minutes at the incinerator or gone out at the store and asked, as I was in the store leaving or whatever, to an individual.
Yeah.
That's a big thing, because the people will tell you. If you ask them, they're going to tell you.
Oh, absolutely.
And that, that's the most important
Especially in this town, we can't, we can't help it.
Right. It's everybody, though, that's
It's a good thing, it's a good thing.
It really is a good thing.
Yeah, you can't, you can't fix a problem unless you know what it is.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's how I, that's my biggest enjoyment, is to hear them, you know, because they, they'll either praise you, or they will murder you, one of the other.
And you probably deserve both.
And you deserve both in some
You gotta get both, you gotta get both, I love it. Rich, what makes you want to be a selectman? This is your first foray into this, this field as well, you've done so many other things.
Um, since I moved into town, the town has changed vastly. The demographics of the town, in nineteen seventy-nine, the average house in town was a three-bedroom raised ranch with no garage, sold for around forty thousand dollars. Whereas today, we have these little mansions, you know, that are half a million dollars. And that's, I think it's wonderful, I think it's, I love everything about Litchfield. But, but on the wall over here, we have a picture of a lady that I have an awful lot of respect for, Pat Jewitt, and I, when people talk about volunteering, I, I have to think about Pat. When, in the early days, we used volunteers, if we couldn't get it done with volunteers, we did without.
I, I
And, and people, I remember when my son was young, my son Brandon, we were redoing the building, or saving the building at Talbot Hall at Deripon, and I was spending an awful lot of time down there, and somebody came up to Brandon and said, gee, Brandon, what's your dad do for work? Brandon said he works at Deripon. And, you know, the town has changed, a lot of people have moved into town, and they demand more services, and I think that's fine. But I think we need to work together and use volunteers, get people involved.
So you think that by joining, you're going to have an ability to get people to work together more, and that's, that's your desire?
I think if you ask around town, if you ask what people have as an impression on me, I'm a person that people have respect for, and I can get things done, and I can work with people to accomplish things. If you drive past Campbell High School, you ask the people that were involved when Campbell High School was passed and built, I have a picture here of me at the groundbreaking of Dar, of Campbell High School.
Everybody wishes they had props now, peeps.
I, I have a, a picture of, here, here's a groundbreaking, and the, the little slim fellow here on the left-hand side is Rich LaSalleis. I have a, a picture of, that I'm very proud of, of Marilyn Wade and I on the front page of the, of the, of the Nashville Telegraph. We needed a two-thirds vote to, to get a high school here in Litchfield, two-thirds for a bond, and towns in our shape had a real hard time getting it done on the first pass. And people said you can't get it done on the first pass to get two-thirds. Property poor town, people are scared of it, they're not going to do it. We got sixty-eight percent of the vote, I was chairman of the School Board, along with literally dozens of people in town, and we pulled together and we got it done. I have been subbing at Campbell for
Okay.
Ten years, and I love it.
Okay, thank you very much, Rich.
Did I get a bell for that?
You got a bell, dude, you got a bell. Not, not your last one, I bet.
One ricky dingy.
Ain't that bad?
I started using a squeaky toy.
Well, I was going to use the squeaky toy, but Rich didn't like it, so you should probably use the squeaky toy. Okay, are you happy with the current departmental setup and leadership? I'm going to start
That's an online question.
That's an online question?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to start with Kim on this one.
You're talking about the Department of, on the, on the municipal side?
This is, are you happy with the current departmental setup and leadership, Jay?
Yes, that would be on the municipal side.
On the municipal side, okay.
Am I happy with the way they're set up? You mean like how they break it down, the budget, you know, like the fire, police, about the categories? I'm happy with what I've seen, I went over that with a fine-toothed mouth.
Happy, all right, so, happy or unhappy works. John?
With the structure, happy.
Kurt?
Happy.
Rich, yes or no?
As far as I know, I'm happy.
Yay, okay. Jack?
I'm happy.
Okay, good, thank you very much for our online person that asked that question. We have another one here, how will you work to ensure that the town and school leadership work together with a shared vision for our community? And I think that this is a great question, because I really feel like we have, the selectmen should be joining, I believe, these two groups, but I truly feel like there's a, a town budget and the school budget that don't necessarily work together all that much, and it could be the way the School Board is set up. It definitely seems like they're two different entities. So is there a way, I'm going to probably change this question a little bit and say, is there a way that you think that you could get the School Board and the rest of the town to work more together? Rich?
Well, yeah, I, I think we should, I think, working through the Budget Committee, I think that, I, I think also, one of the things Kim and I were talking earlier about working with the Planning Board, we have a housing crisis here in southern New Hampshire, and, you know, the, like to see a solution to that. Certainly purchasing, from a business administrator standpoint, maybe we can, you know, swing a deal with a school and town, go together and buy their salt from Tim down to Tim's turf, and get a good deal for it. But, yeah, I think we should have worked together as much as possible.
Um, John?
That already happens.
Yeah, so I think some of that already happens, and the Campbell salt, I think it's the school gets the salt from us, which we get on state
What about the vision, though? What about the vision, though? I mean, I really feel like they're two separate, working in different directions. How can you get that, so that we have a shared vision between the school department? So that they understand that there's a town and the town very well understands that there's a school.
Yeah, I think the problem is, is there... I think the missions are somewhat different, right? So their missions are a little bit different than what the town's mission is. But I think where there is, if there is, where there is opportunity, the town in the past, and I believe will continue to do that, is to try to bring those resources together. An example would be, you talk about buying power. Again, we do some of that today, right?
We had salt. Salt used to be purchased in the town. It was somewhere in the vicinity of $110 or $105, somewhere in there, a ton, a yard. We ended up making a deal going through a consortium that I had found, and we started buying salt at $32 a ton. Oh, $52 a ton. And then each year it changed, but majority of the time it was somewhere in the vicinity of $51 to $52. I approached the school because they were paying to solve in their contract. But we worked that out where they get our salt.
Yeah, it seems silly that that wouldn't be our contract. That wouldn't be the town contract.
And I felt that way. And I approached the school board, and actually the school administrator.
So, actually, there's a question. I mean, you're raising a good point. When it comes to buying salt, I think that's great. You talk about, let's say, plowing the parking lots. We don't have the resources to plow the school park. We looked at it, I think it was evaluated at one point in time. We don't have the resources to be able to keep the roads open and plow the lots to have the schools open.
So we hire different plow people?
They have to hire different people, yeah. They do.
They do it under a contract.
That's crazy!
But how do you... So it comes back to...
It should all be the same thing, then we need more people on the to plow.
Right, right.
And the funny part is, is it's all the same pot of money, so we can't look at it as if it's us versus them. You know, it's all the same tax dollars, so...
Right, but that's why it shouldn't be us versus them. It should be we. And I'm feeling sometimes that it's them and us.
No, I don't think that's the case. I think there is priorities. When there's things like, when there's a need like a new building, there is a little bit of planning about, does a school come forward, does a town come forward with a big expense? There's some negotiation that happens there. But to Kurt's point, and I think everyone in the room, it's the same tax dollars. It is bucketed differently, and it's looked at it differently, but it's the same tax dollars. So whether the town picks up the plowing of the schools, and we hire resources and equipment to do it, that just means the town budget goes up to be able to afford that.
We're still not talking about vision, though.
Yeah, I agree. We're not talking about vision, but...
Kim, do you have an idea?
That's what I was...
Yeah, we do that.
Is that something we're stuck in?
We do, we do.
That's what I was trying to explain, maybe...
You don't get stuck with salt, though.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to explain, you know, we're doing exploration, but maybe it is sounding like we really do have to sit down and look at what we do in common, and try to work together in common. Again, I didn't have enough time to see if the charters are different, like you said, the mission statements maybe, but if we could do that.
Yeah. Jack? Any ideas?
Oh, I think you could work with the school board. I have, in the past, worked with them. Not so much the school board, but the administrator for the school board.
Okay.
The gentleman I worked with, he was great. I had no problems whatsoever. I'd come in with an idea, he'd agree or disagree. And I think they're always open-minded.
Okay. Rich? Sorry.
Yeah, I think we need to work together, particularly with respect to...
Oh, sorry, Rich, I'm giving you twice. Kurt?
All right.
You answered about the salt. Sorry.
I had an opportunity to work with the capital planning committee with the school.
I'm being reprimanded. Me too. Sorry, Kurt.
No, I had an opportunity to work with the capital planning committee with the school. And the...
Capital planning, that would be a vision.
Now, we have a capital planning committee that we formed, and we've invited the school. The school invited us. Unfortunately, I had some situations this past fall where my father, who ended up passing away, I had to spend a lot of time with him, so I couldn't make a lot of those meetings. But what I saw with the school was that they had, just have a ton of needs. And I feel like, you know, we need to get together and figure out, like John said, the best way to approach how to cure, how to solve a lot of these, you know, smaller problems and bigger problems that everybody goes through.
Because their IT system must be phenomenal over at the school. And I know we have some IT problems here at the town level. Isn't that something, part of a vision, that we would get everybody able to talk?
Well, it's... The hard part is...
The problem is they have to be separate systems. So they have to be on islands of themselves, because there are laws around kids and how that works.
Oh, okay, and information.
In addition, when you talk about the town systems, we have municipal side, which is the business side of it, but then we also have the police and fire that have HIPAA and other requirements for our FBI. So those systems can't really necessarily be together. What we have done in the past, and we still try to do, is we try to, you know, the purchasing power, right? Try to buy the same things, try to be consistent, so we get better pricing. We do that with our consolidated track contracts and our networking contracts. As far as resources go, the school has a tight resource around IT. They have, I think they have two people supporting all three schools. So they're not available to come over here during our business day to help us.
Right.
But as an example of us working together in the school, you know, Article 7, which is the Public Safety Communication System, that was the town having a need that has to get addressed. But we folded in the school to help improve their systems too, at no cost to the school, and really no cost to the town, other than the total project we estimated out.
Okay, and we're gonna switch tracks here a little bit, and I'm gonna start with Rich, because I really don't think he got hit twice, but... Well, except for by himself. Any ideas on how to increase the non-residential tax revenue in town? Do you have any ideas on that?
Yeah, it's always a challenge here in Litchfield, because we want to maintain the rural character of the town. I grew up on a farm, and it has always appealed to me. But by the same token, we have all this tremendous growth that's occurring up by the airport. And that's pressing down. So many years ago, I participated in a committee that looked at the zoning laws of the town. And we have a business zoning up in the North End. And I think it's a matter of continually looking at that. But again, you have to balance the desires of the people to maintain the rural character of the town with the need for a commercial tax base.
How do you feel about the gas station that's being proposed? Do you mind if I ask?
I haven't looked at it a lot, but, you know, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, we used to have the Litchfield Garage sold gas.
Yeah.
And so, you know, people need some convenience. And I think people have a right to develop their property. But, you know, we just need to roll with the punches. They did us a big favor many years ago when they put the railroad over in Merrimack. And thank goodness they did, because we'd be like them.
We don't want to do that. Jack, what about you?
I don't know. If we're talking about the gas station, I think that's probably a good idea. I think the Planning Board has done their due diligence in making sure that the people that are building it are building it properly. And taking... That's right on top of an aquifer, so they're doing everything that's possible to keep that aquifer protected.
Right.
That's one of the things that's very important.
Building the tanks above ground?
Right. No, I think they're in a casing or something. I read something about it.
Yeah, above ground and in casing.
They're in a casing, and they're videotaped and...
So the thing was tax revenue.
Right, we're talking about tax revenue, but we are talking about tax revenue with the gas station. What other...
Well, we have... We're adjacent to the airport. We have airplanes flying over us all the time. Years ago, we went to... They had a committee in the airport, you know, part of the airport. The decisions made on the airport were done by that committee.
Yep.
And we approached Manchester's mayor at the time, because Londonderry was turned over... The airport was turned over to Londonderry and so forth. There's an impact on the community because of it, because of the airport.
And do we get any revenue from it?
We have UPS. All their trucks go through our community.
Right, I hear Darlene thinks that a lot with the horses.
It may be a stay road, but it's still going through our community.
So do you think we should be getting some revenue from that, and we're not?
And we approached that. We approached the airport to see why.
It seems like we've missed some times where we could have gotten revenue.
Yeah, and I think we could have gotten revenue had we pressed the issue.
We didn't have Continental register their trucks.
But we did not have enough clout to push the issue.
So what would we do, though? How would we get more clout to get some revenue into the town?
I don't know. I don't know if you have to start at the federal level or at the state level and get someone sitting on that committee. So that we would be able to... And that was what the point was. We went there trying to get a seat on the committee.
Kim?
If you look at the map behind you, the north part of town is business, and all the way at the bottom is business near 102, at the bottom. It might not be a popular thing, but you're asking about the tax. We need businesses here. I say on 102, behind the woods, where you can't see it, to put some businesses in there if we could attract that. A college campus. Well, I would say we'd probably need an economic development team or, you know, committee. We do have some plans, but they're a little old, but we would have to maybe look at that. But I think if we could get more, at the bottom of the map, on 102, in some of that area, that would be helpful. As far as the gas station...
Who owns that land?
Some of it is the state. I mean, some of it is the town and the state, because where the highway was supposed to go in. But there is some available back there. As far as the gas station, as far as the Planning Board, we haven't seen an official anything yet. I know there's talk about it, but we haven't seen anything officially yet, and I couldn't comment on it if we did, anyway.
Okay. John, any ideas on revenue?
Yeah, so, well, first, the gas station, very much in support of developing up in the North End. I think everyone's brought up some good ideas. I think in the past, the town, the board in the past, has tried to go forward to the community and say, we want to invest in at least the mapping of the infrastructure, so that we can entice businesses. And those have been shot down by the community overwhelmingly. So asking about, I think about six years ago, maybe or so, the board brought forward a warrant to do an infrastructure study in the North End about bringing in sewer and all that for Manchester and developing the plans. Sewer lines in. So one of the problems, we don't have infrastructure, right? So in the North End, everything has to be self-contained. We wanted to be able to bring in the sewer lines over from Manchester.
So that people would have public sewage.
So people could plug in public sewage and public water. That would be attractive for some of these small industry things that would mix well in those areas.
That makes sense. That actually makes sense.
That did not pass.
Up on the North End, and people were clear on what was happening?
It was very clear, wasn't it?
And that's always a question. Yeah, that's always a question, is people really know what they're voting on.
Right. And I think that's the thing. We, I said earlier, we want feedback from the people, and these things were talked about, and we took that as a message, okay, we don't want to make those investments. But we also need revenues, right? We need revenue, and we need to figure it out.
We need to have Kurt answer this question, then I have one more question. We're gonna wrap up.
We can go all day. I don't know what you want.
We could, but we have people waiting.
So, you know, we have, the North End, we have LKQ. They moved in. And they're a great neighbor, as far as... They haven't been any problems.
Right, and it looks attractive when you drive by. It's fire not lost yet.
We lost an opportunity with Erickson Foundation, and to John's point, Erickson Foundation wanted to build a small little place for themselves, because they do foundation repair and cement work. But they didn't have three-phase electric on 3A. So there wasn't enough electrical power for them to put their building in. Luckily, LKQ kind of jumped in. But the point I'm making is that...
How much revenue do we actually get from LKQ? I know we lost Continental when they gave us an opportunity, and Londonderry benefited from it. Years and years ago, we missed that opportunity. And a lot of that revenue, right, a lot of that revenue would have been from them registering their trucks.
Same thing with LKQ. But LKQ right now is not registering in the town, I don't believe, yet.
No, not yet.
Not yet. So that's really the revenue that we get from these outside businesses. Is that correct?
Impact fees, too, yeah.
Yeah, business impact fees, yeah.
Taxes, I mean taxes on the building. I mean, the building's not changing.
Continental's still working out of their North plant.
Right, and that looks beautiful, the work that they've done out there now. That's gorgeous.
And they have shifted.
They have a pile of equipment that is registered in the community.
They shifted.
Being registered now?
Yeah, they shifted.
They shifted?
They shifted, yeah.
Wonderful. That's a good thing. That's because he's a good neighbor, not because we went out and got it, though. Okay, so we're gonna finish up here. What's your opinion on the use of the unassigned fund balance? Like for a new plow truck? I'm sorry, this might not be our last question, but this was a question that came across, and we've gone back and forth to... Oh, we got one more? Okay. What's your opinion on the use of the unassigned fund balance, like for a new plow truck? It was brought in by somebody on the What's Up page, and they were referring to Article 12, where we're using that money for a $100,000 truck. What is your feeling of us using that unassigned balance fund for that truck?
Well, I mean, in case people don't know, the unassigned fund is basically our savings account for the town. And by having a savings account, it allows us to have a better bond rating. I mean, there is a requirement that we're supposed to have X amount of dollars in there, and we've grown that account not to a substantial amount, but it allows us to actually make these types of purchases without direct tax impact. So yes, the taxes have already been paid, but it's kind of put into a savings account, the unassigned fund. And then we're allowed to use that to upgrade things.
And this is the money that funds our bond rating account?
Exactly. Well, it's kind of our... Yeah, it's...
Or does it go in there if we don't spend it? I mean, that's kind of a question. I'm gonna ask that to John. So there's a fund that we have that affects our bond rating. And that directly impacts, just like your own bond rating is your credit score. It directly reacts to what you pay in interest for the projects that we do in town. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, that's its biggest help for us, just like our own...
It's our flow. It's our checking account, savings account, right?
Checking account, savings account. And the bigger it is, the bigger our bond rating, and the less we pay in interest when we loan.
And it allows us to purchase things that we need to upgrade.
See, I'm learning something. Yeah, scary.
It also allows us to offset the taxes, so I think more importantly, if the fund balance is healthy, it is appropriate to use those dollars to not have to raise the taxes again.
But this isn't money that's just sitting... I mean, how, Kim, how much do you know about the bond? The bond rating and the unassigned balance fund? How much do you know about it? Anything yet?
Not yet, because those are some of my questions for the budget, but if it is what they're saying it is, which I'm assuming it is, if we can get longevity out of that truck, as it's obviously needed, I would be for it.
You'd be for it, okay. But it can be used for almost anything, and I know that sometimes people are like, well, we voted this down, and then the next thing you know, we've got it. We didn't, you know, say we voted down this plow truck last year.
We wouldn't get it next last year, again this year.
No.
If no means no in this town.
No means, we still are doing no means no.
For one year.
One year.
For one year, and then the next year you'd start trying again? Now, do you have to use a warrant article to spend this money, or can you just spend the money?
The only time the board can spend out of the fund balance is the one time when they do their offset in October, Art against Taxes with the RA. Everything else has to be asked by the voters.
Jack, you were on the Board of Selectmen for a long time, so I'm sure you're really familiar with the unassigned fund balance.
Well, it's exactly what they're saying. It's a savings account, basically, but it's dictated by the state.
Did you used to return more money to the...
There are times when a Board of Selectmen can move money back to the taxpayer at the end of the year.
And John, you said that you do that? You do do that?
They, for the time I've been on it, and I think even this year, they've always moved somewhere around the order of $150, $175, $200.
Where we overreach where we need to be in that fund?
It's being done so that the tax rate tries to stay as balanced as possible, or as consistent as possible.
You have...
I'm sorry.
You've got department heads that are running their departments very frugal.
How much has the budget gone up between, over the last four or five years, the town budget's gone up?
I think there's a lot of different speculation out there, but...
It's about $2 million, right? $2 or $3 million?
Yeah.
It's a pretty hefty expense.
Yeah.
Rich, what's your opinion of the unassigned fund balance? Being used for things like the plow truck, that's a $100,000 purchase for the town?
One thing that I would say about, if something's on a warrant article, and it is shot down by the people, that that should not be purchased. I agree that we have a savings account, and we use things that are, use it as necessary. But if the people speak about some particular expenditure, then it shouldn't be used.
Okay.
Just a quick correction, though. It's not used. If it's on a warrant article and shot down, whether it's funded by the fund balance or raised by taxes, it can't be done, at least for a year.
No means no in Litchfield.
So that doesn't happen.
Okay, we're kind of getting to the point where we're gonna close down now, so I'm gonna ask you all to just give us your final statement. And I guess I'm gonna start, you know, what is the last thing? What I really like about this, and the reason I started to do this last year, is that there were times I would get in the voting booth, and I didn't know who the heck I was voting for. So I didn't have a face that went with that name. I didn't have an idea of who that person was. So I'd go, oh, I'm gonna vote for this name, because this name rolls off the tongue, or, you know. I remember my husband picked a person whose last name was Beers on the baseball team when he was young. He's like, okay, I like beers. But I'm gonna take that. So to avoid some of that, last year, I wanted people to at least get a face with the name they were voting for. And I think you've given us a ton more than that today, and I truly appreciate everyone for coming. But a final statement, just what's the last thing you want to say? Vote for me, cuz. Rich?
Well, people look at me, and a lot of people that are watching on TV and so forth, and say, who's this gray-haired, old crippled-up old guy, and what's he doing here, and what kind of impact does he have? This is a picture of me coaching a little league team back when I was younger. I... It's another picture of me coaching a basketball team when I was younger. I have totally immersed myself in the town of Litchfield. I have been substitute teaching at Campbell for many years, for 10 years. My goal is to sub as long as I have grandchildren that go to the school. My wife and I are blessed by having three grandchildren in school. And we're gonna, I'm gonna keep subbing as long as they'll have me, until I no longer have grandchildren in school. And when I say that I've been totally immersed into town, I reflect on just this past fall. I was in a classroom, and there was a young fellow there. It was a freshman. I recognized his name. He's kind of a quiet kid. And after a while, I went up to him, and I happened to know... after a while, I went up to him and I happened to know that his brother, this kid's name is, the kid, his brother's name was, was Zach, and his, his brother had died six or seven years ago. So this kid was very young, and I went up to him and I said, you know, I said, I knew your brother. And that, that kid, right there, got the biggest smile on his face. And every time I'm at Campbell, I'll see that kid and he'll, he'll give me a fist bump or something. And there's, there's been times, you know, people say, well, why do you wanna sub? You know, don't the kids give you a hard time? I say, no. They start to give me a hard time, I say, I know your mother. And that takes care of them. So my, my point is, you see what you get with me, all right? I'm totally dedicated to the town of Litchfield. I'm gonna be straight up with you, I'm a straight shooter. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what I feel, and hopefully what you feel is the best thing for Litchfield.
Thank you so much, Richard, thank you for everything that you've done for the town, and the list goes on and on, there's many things you haven't mentioned. Jack?
Well, I'll say like Richard, what you see is what you get. I've worked, I worked very, very hard, as I'm sure you all know, as your selectman for a number of years, on Budget Committee, the Fire Department, Road Agent. I've done my very best to make everyone comfortable and safe when, no matter what job I had. I'm looking to get elected to the Board of Selectmen, I have grandchildren, as Richard has, here in town. I wanna see them grow up and live in a town like I kinda grew up in.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you very much, thank you for everything you have done in town, your list goes on and on as well. Kim?
I love to live in Litchfield, obviously, I'm so happy to be here, my family, it is a wonderful experience. I think it's unique, I don't think a lot of people have this opportunity. I love to volunteer in this community, I meet everybody in town, has volunteered for something in this town, and it's wonderful to see. I hope you remember that I can bring my business experience, my education, my work that I've done on the other four, you know, the Litchfield Historical Society, the Planning Board, Heritage Commission, and at the national, national, regional level.
Can we mention you have a BA in leadership?
I have a doctorate in leadership, yeah. So I've worked very hard on those committees, and I would bring that same rigor to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Not that kind of doctor.
I have a pain in my elbow right now.
She will lead you in the right direction. Yeah, she will lead you where you need to go.
As I said in the past, I, I just, I feel very strong about this community and I wanna keep on giving back. So whether you come and support me on March tenth or not, the most important thing is come out and vote, and support your candidates that you choose. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John and Kim also, for everything that you have done for our town, you both have served us really, really well. And Kurt?
Well, I have an eleven-year-old that's currently in Litchfield, the middle school, and I'm passionate about what I believe in. I wanna continue the work that we've been doing on the board, I'd like to get re-elected. And I feel like we, we've now got a new page to turn and try to get taxes stabilized.
Thank you very much, thank you for everything you have done for our town. As you can see, we have some amazing candidates here, Jim Cardelo is not able to be here, I believe he had a statement on our page. But thank, thank you all for being here, and thank you all for just, just such a good example for the other people in town, our kids, ourselves. Thank you again. And we're gonna return in about, probably about ten minutes.
But before you
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanna give a plug to the WhatsApp page for what they did with the River Access. It's a wonderful thing, people have been working on that for thirty years, forty years, whatever. And it's, so every time I go past that, John Bryant is smiling down. And if, without the WhatsApp page, that would have never happened.
Or you, you helped a lot with that, Rich.
Whatever, but, but
Yeah, I did.
The WhatsApp page is doing a great thing, so.
Okay, thank you very much, and I think we're done for this year, for this board. Thank you very much.